Good evening.
I use it on my side.
Well, hopefully Barry gets here.
Said good evening.
Dave, you heard any?
Did anybody hear anything from Barry?
Tyler, have you heard from Mr. Hodge?
Good evening, David Williams.
All right, let's, uh, we'll go and call the Board of Supervisors, May 20th workshop to order. Mr. Williams is going to lead us in the pledge and Mr. Norvick is going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me while I pray. Lord, we assemble before you to, once again, do government in our county. We ask your blessing over our community. We ask you to bless this time together, give us ears to listen with and speak words that would honor you. We pray for the safety of not only our citizens, but specifically our first responders, a fire department who's on the scene right now of a fire out toward the west of the county and understand somebody was overcome by heat. We ask for special attention there, healing for them and just safety for everybody that does the work of this county. And we pray that the outcome of what we do here tonight will be pleasing to you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Do you have any requests to postpone agenda items, add, delete, or change the order presentation?
Move to approve the agenda as presented by the county administrator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we've basically, the approval agenda has been approved. Public comment period, we have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, state your name and an address, please, for the public. Seeing none, we'll have, close the public comment period, move on to 7A, our discussion item. The first one, Pat, is the public comment on the Office of Comprehensiv, CSA, basically.
Thank you. The only thing I would like to point out is that this is time-sensitive and the action that we're asking you to do this evening is to authorize the chairman to make a written public comment on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. So we, in the end, will ask you to make that as a motion, that's found on page three, the actual wording of the motion. The letter that we're asking you to approve to send in is found on page eight and nine. It was drafted by our Social Services Director, Kathy Pumperton, and so I'm going to turn this presentation over to Kathy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions?
Basically, as I read the letter, it is really referencing that it seemed that in places you have the cart before the horse.
Yes.
And I fully agree with the letter saying that that's their concerns with this process and that they seem to have gotten things out of balance when somebody would be admitted or, and then when your team would have an attempt to evaluate themselves.
Yes, sir. The normal process is that a child comes through the Family Assessment and Planning Team, which is the FAP team, which is composed of representatives from Social Services, Education, Community Services, Juvenile Justice, and Health. And they discuss the child's needs and what the best remedy is for the child, whether it's a private day placement in school, or counseling, or some other sort of therapy. In this proposed rule change that the Office of Comprehensive Services has put forward, they're addressing those times when a parent has placed the child in a residential treatment facility outside of the FAP and CSA process and then comes back and wants the locality to pick up the cost for education, which is expensive. It's, we have a 43% match rate in Powhatan County and the educational services for these kids can range from $100 to $215 a day. The policy, when it was first introduced, the league asked that they at least hold off until the next fiscal year because most of us had already submitted budgets and we had not put anything in for this rule change. And when a parent places a child in a residential treatment facility, a physician has signed a certificate of need and they have gone directly to the most restrictive choice for the child. It's highly unlikely that the family will want to go backwards and say, do intensive in-home therapy instead. So we're sort of stuck with the process. But the policy requires that the child be referred to the local FAP process and then the FAP team meet within 14 days, which for our county would be difficult because our FAP team meets once a month. So to convene everybody for another meeting would be, it would be a difficult process. And then if we agree with the placement, the county starts picking up the tab from the day of the placement. If we don't agree with the placement and we think that there's a better service for the child, the county starts picking up the tab from the 15th day of placement until the individual service plan that the FAP team comes up with can be implemented, which is an undetermined, an undetermined stay. So those are the most critical parts of the policy. Oh, I forgot one thing. The Medicaid could possibly pay for the residential services and therapeutic services, but Powhatan County pays 27 cents, 27% on the Medicaid bill. So there's that added expense, too. And we're not, we're not real sure how many children are out there in this situation. So we just think it's probably going to be very expensive. CSA is already expensive and I thought you all should be aware of it so that you could chime in with your comments as well. The letter that I sent to the county administrator was a draft. I have rewritten that letter and have copies of that, which I'll give to Ms. Jackson if you like. That letter was written by a committee and it reads like a letter written by a committee. So I edited it a little bit, if you'd like to see that letter as well.
We did edit what you had sent us, so it reads as if it's coming for the board, but we would like if you have additional changes.
Right. Thank you. I'll leave that here. Any, any questions for me?
Catherine, in a nutshell, tell us what the argument is for this change. Why is it being pushed so vigorously?
Because the providers have been scholarshiping the children when the parents place them and it's gotten expensive. And they would like to not scholarship the children, they'd like to get paid for. We think it's at the instigation of the provider community.
Is there, is there anything wrong with the process that we have in place, that is with the FAP team, et cetera?
No. No, no. In fact, we have allowed parents to bring children to FAP themselves without being referred by an outside agency like Juvenile Justice or Community Services because it's the right thing to do. And sometimes having a pool of people debate a situation, you come up with a better solution. So Powhatan has allowed that for a couple of years now, which is good because the state, the General Assembly passed legisla, legislation this past session requiring all county, all localities to do that. So our FAP team, the process runs well, it runs smoothly. We had a circumstance recently where a mom called our community, I mean, I get my programs confused, our Comprehensive Services Coordinator, to ask about her child. Her child has been in a cycle of residential treatment. She gets to be okay, then she, you know, time goes by and she sort of spirals out of control and then she's back in a residential facility. Had she been facted, it's possible that somebody would have said, why not put this child on an antidepressant instead of an anti-anxiety pill? Why not give this child some counseling consistently instead of just slapping her in the, in the facility? And this cycle's been going on for some years now because the parent just dealt with it alone and the treatment facility just, I don't know where the failure was, but I think our process is, is really effective. And I think that this, how I explain it is I say, Mr. Tucker, I'm going to need to go shopping and you can't tell me where to shop or what to buy, but I'm going to need your credit card and you're going to need to increase your limit. That's pretty much what it boils down to. So it is partic, it could be highly expensive for the county and I thought you should be aware of it.
So, may I continue?
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
So, I'm sorry, I still don't understand why we would change a process that has been in place and a process which works and a process that brings multiple subject matter experts' eyes on the particular issue at hand. What is the argument for doing or bypassing that process? I don't understand.
That's the problem. The problem is that people do bypass that process. People take their kids directly to a residential treatment facility.
But at this point, we don't pay for it.
No, but this policy says that the facility is obligated to notify the local FAP team. The child has to be facted within 14 days. If we agree with the decision to place the child, to keep the child in the facility, then we pick up the tab beginning at day one. If we don't agree, then we come up with an alternative service plan and we start paying on day 15.
Let me ask it one slightly different way. Who's doing the diagnosis if it doesn't go through the FAP?
The facility.
The facility.
The psychi, yes, the psychiatrist at the facility does it.
First, I guess the parents would because they take their child to the, to the...
Sure, the child's out of control perhaps.
They take them and then...
And then they, they don't know what else to do, so they take them to the facility and the facility says, okay, we'll fix her. And then...
Well, what facility, it's in the profit-making mode, would say no?
Well...
They would, but this, this step then adds the step that says, now, we're notified after the fact that we would then determine whether we're going to have to pay or...
And even if we dis...
Even if we don't, even if we didn't say we're not paying, we still...
We're still stuck for part of that bill. We're still stuck for part of that bill. And when the parent, when the family has gone to the most restrictive solution, it's very hard to go backwards and, and as I said, do intensive in-home therapy or something. So we're still going to be stuck with part of the bill if the, if the policy goes through as presented in the material that you have. I went to a meeting a couple of weeks ago that Supervisor O'Bannon in Henrico County facilitated and there were probably 100, close to 140 people from the central region and beyond to discuss this, this rule change because it, it could be really expensive, plus which we, we don't necessarily think it's the best way to handle the issue with the child.
So we're, would it be fair to say that we're not the only county that's going to be sending some type of letter that says, hold on here?
Right. And I think the Virginia Association of Counties, as well as the Virginia Municipal League have, have sent letters about it, yes. Yeah. And the comment period, I think the county administrator mentioned the comment period is over May 29th. But you can...
I'm sorry, Catherine, are you still going?
No, no, I was just going to say you can snail mail or email.
Catherine, real quickly, did your office draft that letter?
No. I, our Comprehensive Services, the Virginia League of Social Service Executives...
Okay, they drafted it.
Our Comprehensive Services Committee drafted the letter and I have slightly edited the letter, so...
That's fine.
It's a little less wordy.
Second question, any projected cost estimates or not, or is it just flying in the dark right now?
We, we don't have a real good sense of how many times this has happened in Powhatan County because we're outside of the process. You know, we are outside of this process. I, you know, I told you one story about a child we just heard about. I think we just got the call about that child this week. But that family has been dealing with this child on their own for some years now. So it's, it's become a problem now because, in my judgment, the provider network has decided that they don't want to scholarship the kids for education anymore. So they, there's two private provider representatives on the State Executive Council, which is the executive level management team for Comprehensive Services and includes Secretary of Health and Human Resources, Director of DJJ, and so on. There's two private provider representatives on that team and I think they have been pushing this, propelling this forward.
Last question, Catherine, after reading through this. Is there, and you may want to tweak the letter, I don't know, but is there any, I know you guys have recommended a study on the cost. The other question, or two, two questions, I guess, one is additionally regarding the study on, is it meeting the true need or are there other alternatives to the true need? Or a third, even within that, is it meeting the true need, will it meet the true need, is there other alternatives to need, or is this just not really fitting with the whole policy of what's presently in place? In other words, it's kind of disjunctive or backwards. I don't know if that, the study could kind of be broadened?
Well, the point of Comprehensive Services was to bring not only the funding streams together, but to bring the people dealing with the children together to make an informed decision about the child. So supporting a process that is outside of the CSA process in a locality is just counterintuitive to that process. Was there another part to your question?
Yeah, well, basically, that, you're, you're getting at it and that is...
Oh, okay.
In other words, if you have this, someone must think this is a problem, right? Obviously.
I do.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, sir.
No, but I mean, somebody thinks this proposal is solving a problem.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, regulations, laws, always there's some crisis or problem.
Yes.
They think there's a problem that government needs to solve.
Right.
And then what they do is they try to propose some solution to the problem. It's great to ask the study for the cost issue, but I think it's broader than that. Of course, the cost is a huge impact. It, you've mentioned it already, it doesn't fit with the whole CSA concept or the purpose or the mission of it. And the other thing is, it looks like you just, what you just recommended, the example you just gave, there's other alternatives to treatment or services rendered, not you're already put in the system and we start paying.
Right.
So I don't know if the study could look at, you know, how these, whether it's anecdotal study, or it's actually empirical study, or it's, you know, controlled group and non-controlled group study, what happens, the problems, what happens for a while? Can they get alternative services, alternative treatment rather than doing what they're proposing?
Right.
That's what I'm saying, a broader study...
Right.
To make them think down there that maybe you're using a sledgehammer and you maybe need a, you know, a finish hammer.
Well, yes, exactly. The, the theory behind Comprehensive Services is that you start with the least intrusive...
Right.
Least invasive process first. And when you put the child directly in residential, you've gone all the way to the end of the line. Concurrently with this reg, this rules change, the Secretary of Health and Human Resources has decided that this is a good opportunity to possibly revamp the Office of Comprehensive Services, which is a standalone agency in his Secretariat. And so he has asked the league for input as to what the best way to revamp OCS. And so we, we have a group coming together Friday of next week to give him recommendations. We figure if somebody's going to ask for your opinion, you're foolish not to give it, so, and we will certainly do that. And the administrative cost, the state only gives us $12,000 to administer this program, which we have 51 children currently in Comprehensive Services. And $12,000 doesn't nearly cover the expense of administering the program, so...
We're asking the board to make a motion to authorize the chairman of the board to make written public comment on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
Tonight?
We're asking you to make this motion tonight because the public comment is due by May 29th. That's why it was time-sensitive to get this on this evening.
Did your chairman, Ms. Wyler, is that the letter? That's the...
The letter as revised by Ms. Pumperton that she has in her hand, yes.
Well, this is a revision of that.
Yes. We're talking, yeah, the revision that you have, correct.
Please for the chairman to go follow with the letter.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You have to ask for opposed.
Opposed? None? Any nays? None? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you. Okay, move on to, thank you, Mr. Williams. Move on to 7B, ordinance amending Powhatan Code, ordinance is to amend chapter 80.
This item is found on page 10 of your agenda. Tonight, it's only a discussion item. We have a public hearing scheduled on June 1st where we will ask you to take action on this ordinance on June 1st after the public hearing. Mr. Melas is going to present this item to you this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you tonight for a discussion is a staff-proposed minor amendment to section 80-68, payment of residential connection fees and installments. Staff has proposed to strike the word residential from the existing county code and allow all property owners that are, to make installment payments, who are eligible to connect to the county water sewer system. And what actually originally spurred this is I had two inquiries back-to-back, almost within a week's timeframe, from smaller businesses that wanted to connect to the, one wanted to connect the sewer, one actually wanted to connect the water. But the initial fee that was, for them to connect was a little bit more than they were willing to pay out of pocket all at one time. So we feel like this, this change would give potential customers an opportunity to connect to the county utility system without such a large upfront capital cost. One thing to note in the existing ordinance, as well as the proposed ordinance, is that this will not apply to new construction. So a public hearing, as Ms. Wyler stated, will be on June 1st. Any questions or comments?
Questions of staff? It seems pretty straightforward to me. Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
So if they pay in installments, which is what we're, what you're asking us to consider, is there an interest charge paid because they didn't pay it all upfront?
Yes. We actually pay prime plus, I believe it's 3%.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions to ask?
We also put a lien on the property to the...
Correct.
Yeah, you could.
Thank you, Mr. Melas. I think we're ready for the public hearing on, on the first. Moving on to item 7C, discussion of recreational fields, recreation and park fees scheduled. We use the county athletic fields.
The Board of Supervisors on March 16th asked staff to study the issue of recreation fees. At that time, also, we suspended all fees for travel teams. They are not paying any fees for this season and will not pay any fees until such time as the board adopts a policy. Mr. March Altman and Mary Ann Woodell have been working on this and tonight, Mary Ann Woodell, our Recreation Coordinator, will make the presentation to the board.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening. I think in your package you have two copies. You have an athletic fee comparison, which I called all of the surrounding localities to actually look at what everywhere else tends to do with youth tournaments, adult tournaments, tourism and advanced groups, as well as all of their travel teams and other usages for the fields. So what you have is, is the comprehensive list of what those localities do. What I would like to propose to make us more comparable is more of a plan that is similar to Chesterfield County in which we would charge a fee for youth and adult tournaments of $75. On the proposed sheet, it does say $20 an hour for lights. However, I would also like to have you consider the fact that Chesterfield County charges a $75 flat fee, lights or no lights, because what happens otherwise is that someone then has to try to police that and you have to try to determine either after the fact of, okay, did they cut the lights on? Did they not cut the lights on? Were they on for 30 minutes? Were they on for an hour? And if you don't have someone out there, that's pretty hard to police. And if you've already, because we ask that those fees are paid to us before they ever take the field, it's hard to do after the fact. And then you say, oh, you guys were out there for, you know, seven hours, can you now turn around and give us the money for lights? Chesterfield charges a rate of $75 flat with lights and $50 if it's a, if it's a daytime tournament. I would like it just simply a flat $75 fee, lights or no lights. In the way of the travel and tourism, I didn't change some of that. That's the language that was already in our policies about the $40 for the cosponsored and benefits. Now, we do have some, some tournaments where if it's an annual event where they could write a letter to actually try to waive that fee, like if it was the Charlie Green Memorial Tournament, they could write a letter to try to request that that fee be waived. Same thing, if you had the Special Olympics going on out there, they could ask that that fee be waived. In regards to the travel teams, when I took a look at all of the other localities, I thought that a $20 per field for practice would be just a flat rate instead of getting into the lights again with, you know, is it daylight savings time? Is it not? You know, are they going to be out there for 30 minutes, an hour? And that was a little bit comparable. A lot of our fees were pretty high compared to other localities. I did look at a $30 per game if it was a travel team. That $20 fee would be a two-hour max with lights. And we did have some questions that have come up in regards to non-county residents on the travel teams as well as the local groups. So that's where I would like to propose a $10 per non-county resident per season fee. Chesterfield's fee is $15 per person per season if you're a non-county resident. And that goes with any of their sponsored, cosponsored leagues, everything. They, they have that fee and it's $15 per person. I'm going a little bit fast.
So we just want to point out to the board also on the same fee schedule that Mary Ann is presenting from, that the top row is what we're, we're, staff is proposing. It says Powhatan proposed. The second row is current fees and then you see then each locality. So we wanted, we do want to point out to you, this is a reduction in the fees that Powhatan is currently, not necessarily charging, but what Powhatan currently has in its ordinance and has never charged for any team that says they have Powhatan, whether they have one Powhatan player or more than one. We also want to be very clear that this $10 per non-resident per season also applies to Powhatan League. So PYAA players who are non-resident would also be charged $10 per non-resident player. So that's a new fee to PYAA and travel teams would be charged only for those, they would all, only be charged for those people that are non-residents on the team, so... Which is similar, that's what Chesterfield does, is what we're doing, so...
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of quick questions. I don't know if we want to, I don't know if you were, I don't want to interrupt you if you were wanting to do a...
Well, I was going to say, we had a pretty...
Questions or...
We had a pretty lengthy fee structure before. It was pretty hard to take a look at. And when I first came on board with the county, you know, I, I took a look at the fee structure and I said, okay, so we've got these teams out here, we need to be charging fees. So I started putting those calls out. I started letting everybody know how much they owed the county to use the fields. And they said, wait a minute, no one's ever charged us a fee before. And I said, well, it's clearly in the ordinance and the fee structure. And I directed them to the website and where it was located. And they said, no, we've never been charged a fee. So that's where a lot of the questions started coming up, but it was adopted back in 2014 to actually have this fee structure in place. So that's what I, when I started making the calls around to see what other localities do and what they charge.
That was, well, I'm going to start, maybe I'll go back to the beginning and you, you hit on it. And I've got maybe a series of questions, other board members may as well. I know you've got these categories, of course, you've got the youth tournaments, adult tournaments, tourism advanced or some other category, kind of almost like a miscellaneous, then you've got travel teams and other usages. With your experience, I know in reading the update and all that stuff, was that it was in effect but wasn't being enforced until recently. The question is, on the enforcement issue, was it only, was it travel teams that weren't being charged and all of a sudden they got whacked? Or was it everybody wasn't being charged and all of a sudden youth tournaments, adult tournaments, tourism advanced, everything all of a sudden started to apply? Is that what happened or, I'm just trying to get context here?
No, at the current time, you had tournaments that were being charged. The fee was rather high. The current fee structure was $120 without lights. There was $20 per lights. There was a $40 field prep fee. So what it did was, we had some groups looking at us when I first started to, to work here that said, hey, you know, we want to do some tournaments out there. And they said, weren't, you know, what do you mean, it's going to be $120 with no lights and $20 for lights and $40 for field prep? We don't pay that anywhere. So the only gentleman, and it's because he was kind of scrambling, was someone with NSA and Alan Spencer, who does tournaments out here. And it was only because he ran out of field space in Chesterfield and all the other localities and Dory Park is under construction. So he, he still decided to do his couple of tournaments. So he did pay that, that larger fee scale, but none of the travel teams have ever been charged, it's my underst... charged, it's my understanding. So the tournaments were paying, but it was just one gentleman who was actually using us. Nation's baseball actually backed out because of our fee. USSA thought our fees were too high. It was just, we were used as that alternative if nothing else was available.
So Mary Ann has also, she feels that we will be able to get more tournaments out here if our price is more comparable to Chesterfield or the others. We won't be losing these tournaments now, they will be coming out. So we think, even though we're reducing the fee, we think the revenue may increase.
Yeah. Let me ask you another question. Do you know at all what the policy rationale was behind the higher fees that came, that kind of came when you got there? Do you understand if there was any reason to that or not?
I have no idea. I can't even begin to tell you because everything was in such disarray. It's, it's been a real madhouse trying to, to get it all back together.
Right. And I know it looks like what you've tried to do is basically you've tried to make it comparable with the other jurisdictions to competitive, so to speak.
Yes.
On fees. Let me go back though to the travel teams and other usages. And I know you, you mentioned you got your proposed in the, in the Powhatan, and I was looking through some of the ordinance this afternoon, flipping through there real quickly. And that is, I know you got a ten, if I understand this right, for, for practices or something along that, ten, it's presently ten, an hour per field. And then you have the fifteen per hour for field for adults, a little bit more, twenty per hour for field for non, a non-resident if it's a non-resident, and then twenty hour for lights and twenty-five for adults. There's this kind of stratified structure. And then you're going to like just a twenty dollar per field. But is that thirty per game and twenty per field and that's up to a two hour max with lights? What if they go over that? What happens? I don't know if you, in other words.
Right, it's pretty hard to police. What we've, what we would ask for probably is a little bit of self-policing, but most of the games and, and practices, no one at this point has ever asked for more than a two hour period. You know, it's usually six to eight, seven to nine, and that's it. And even most of your games are that. But that's where, you know, if they decided, if they knew up front that they were going to go longer than that, we could ask them to pay, you know, double the fee. Or where you could split it in half. If you know that they're going to go for three hours, instead of charging the twenty dollars, because you know it's a two hour max, you would charge them thirty dollars. Once I would have this in place, you know, and it says the two hour max, you know, we could work with them if they were going to go over that. But most teams at this point, for those travel, that's just what, and most of them are wanting like an hour and forty-five minutes. That's where it started to become tough. We had hours, we had teams that said, I want to come out for an hour and fifteen minutes, an hour and forty-five minutes. Because once I started telling them what the rates were, they were doing everything that they could, knowing that they would probably be there for an hour and a half. They were trying to tell me, I think we're only going to be there an hour and fifteen minutes. And really, I think we're only going to have lights on for about thirty minutes instead of an hour. And it really became, okay, I can't be out at every field for every practice or game.
Right. And I know that some of the citizens who spoke previously, the general category of comments was in the category of taxpaying citizen should pay their less or, or something less or, or nothing. And then if you're not, obviously you pay for the privilege of coming here and using it. The question I've got in the travel team category in Powhatan proposed is, you've got ten per non-resident per season.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't look, that looks like this policy actually is favoring non-residents. Is that ten per practice, ten per game, ten per?
It's ten per person.
Ten dollars per person.
Yeah, if you have five.
Per non-resident.
Yeah, if you have five non-residents on your team.
You're going to pay fifty dollars.
Each one of those will pay, you will pay fifty dollars for the whole season for those non-residents.
Yeah, but how many times do you use it?
That would cover that season.
In other words, if they used it and scheduled it and maxed it out and they were using it theoretically more than the travel team that's based out of Powhatan, they might have a lower amount of money, right?
Well, I can tell you with the.
That's still an addition. In other words, that's, they still got to pay the field fee.
That's an addition to their normal cost.
Okay, I didn't understand that from the chart.
Yes. That would be in addition to, they would still pay their normal cost and then that would be on top of their normal cost.
Okay, okay. I see what you're saying. It's, it's graduated, okay. It just didn't have the plus symbol there and I was wondering how that.
Right. And just so you guys know too, at this time, I don't have a single team that has requested the use of a field that does not have Powhatan County residents in some form, either half of the team, seventy-five percent of the team, because all of the other teams go to the localities where they live because they don't want to travel this far and, and pay the gas. So I really don't have requests from teams that are non-county. They might have some participants that are non-county. That's why I knew that I would have to come up with something that would offset that non-county participant rate. And I looked at it and so Chesterfield charges a fifteen dollar per person, so I thought ten dollars would be a comparable.
And Mary Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, the ten dollars per player per season will also apply to our local leagues, PYAA. So if the board does not want that to happen, you need to let us know so that they rewrite that. But this, this would be a fee that PYAA and others, PSA are not currently paying.
And I can speak to that.
For non-residents. It would only be non-residents on their team.
It's only been this year that the, that the Little League, since they switched from Dixie Youth to Little League, this is the first year that they have allowed non-county participants to try to grow because the teams really started to decrease in numbers. And so what they did by switching from Dixie Youth to Little League is it then allows people from Cumberland, Amelia, who are part of Dixie Youth, they can now come to Powhatan to play in Little League, whereas Dixie Youth guidelines and bylaws would not allow them before. They had to play in the jurisdiction that they lived in, or if they were able to get a waiver, they could not go to All-Stars. So this is the first year that they've allowed that. So really, I can't tell you how many participants, but I would guess we, we might have a handful of non-county residents that are playing in Little League.
Maybe, maybe I'll get some clarification on that. Let me give a hypothetical then. Okay, let's say you have a, to, to put the actual in practice here, you have a, a travel team, a soccer or baseball travel team. Let's say it has, it's Powhatan, because there's a couple of ways to judge this or base it. One, it's Powhatan-based and it has one non-resident. And then let me give you that scenario. Then let's say there's a Powhatan-based team, and I'm just going to make the extreme because the, it drives the principle home. It has only one Powhatan resident on it. What do they pay?
Okay, so the one that has only the one non-resident, they're going to pay, well, actually if it's referring to Little League or are you referring to travel team?
Well, I guess, a travel team. Let's take a travel team, let's take a travel team, and let's say that it is a Powhatan-based travel team. Because I think what you're saying here is obviously, if a travel team is not based in Powhatan, it's going to be a non-resident entity. Who cares what the makeup of the players are? They could all be from Powhatan literally, but it's a, it's an entity that's apart from here. I'm driving home, the point is you have a Powhatan-based, let's say, travel team for example, but you have one non-resident. And then try the other team and do an example where you have only one resident. I'm giving the extremes. And so the question is, where, how does that, I'm not clear how that would work.
So if you had, if you had a one-day practice, which would show on here is twenty dollars for a one-day practice for two hours, the team that has the one non-resident would pay thirty dollars. They would pay twenty for the practice and ten dollars for the extra participant. The team that had, let's say, ten out of the twelve or eleven out of the twelve, it's going to be your twenty dollars for the practice and then another, you know, if you've got ten players, another hundred bucks. So they're going to pay a hundred and twenty dollars for practicing on a field for one time.
Okay, so this is player-specific analysis. It's not team analysis, really. It's, are you a resident? Okay.
Right.
And I need clarification. I, when I had said the words PYAA also plays, pays the ten dollars and you said only travel teams pay the ten dollars.
That's for practice. We were, we were now referring to, I believe, Mr. Hodge said, we were referring to the travel teams. If we're looking at Little League, Little League currently does not pay anything to use the fields for practice, where then for the season, they would simply pay that ten dollars per person, per season.
Okay, when you say Little League, you're talking about non-travel Little League.
Right.
Non-travel teams would also pay.
Like your PYAA, yes.
The ten dollars per non-resident per season. They would not pay the twenty dollars per field, practice.
Correct, correct. Because they are considered cosponsored.
Right, okay.
Is that, is, so is that, is that under other? Is that scenario, the Little League falls under other?
Yes, sir. Where it says the ten dollars for cosponsored per non-resident per season. I mean, that would also include your soccer, so that would be your PSA, that would be your lacrosse, it would be the softball, it would be all of those organizations that are, that are considered affiliated or cosponsored by the county. They would begin to pay a fee for those non-county residents. Like I said, I believe that softball is still PYAA, which means that they don't even allow non-county participants in softball. I believe it's only Little League that has started to allow that. Whereas soccer and lacrosse, those guys and, and football does not, that's also a jurisdictional thing. But the lacrosse and soccer do have players that are non-county residents that they are currently not paying a fee for.
So defining the term cosponsor, what you mean by that is, the government, the county has some involvement in the organization, the PSA?
No, no. It would be that they simply are using our fields without, they do not pay for the use of the fields. Little League, PYAA, your lacrosse, your football, those organizations within the county are not currently being charged a fee.
Okay. So, I see what you're saying. Cosponsor defined is basically within the county, an organization within the county. Okay. Draw me the distinction then, what's the distinction between that and a travel team that's based in Powhatan, like Powhatan Fury?
Those organizations are open to all citizens of Powhatan County. When you have a travel team, it is selective. They determine what age they're selecting, they determine based on the player's ability and skill. They can actually say Johnny can play, but Sarah can't. That's really the huge difference. And that's where the other counties tend to draw a line. If it is where you can actually determine who can and cannot play on your team, that's when you charge a fee.
Okay, all right. And is that, that would include perhaps maybe a non-resident? In other words, Johnny comes and he plays and he's from Gushland and he plays well and they put him on. Okay, that, that's, that makes sense. That's a rationale, all right. Distinction with the difference.
Mr. Chairman?
Lou Nordvig.
That was actually Barry just hit on one of the questions I had and, and answered it fully. And Barry, you asked earlier about context and I can give a little bit of anecdotal. I've been a coach for sixteen years. I just finished this month. And I, so I've coached PYA, I've coached Huguenot Little League, there were Powhatan people in Huguenot Little League, I've coached a travel ball, two travel ball teams, and coached a homeschool team, I've coached varsity public high school. So I've pretty much seen it all from both field rental, which we offered at Patrick Henry High School, and also from the other end, having to write the check. So for context, Barry, somewhere around two thousand seven-ish, some, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, I came out here with a travel ball club and we practiced on a junior high field because the rate was pretty good. We had a lot of people from Chesterfield County. And I remember handing the check to Warren Thule and we wrote a separate check for lights. I, I definitely remember that. But the rates were such that it brought half the team out here from Chesterfield County to practice. We didn't play out here, but that was a different story. And then something changed at Parks and Recs, maybe three, three, four years later, and the price went way higher. And I came out here to hand Warren Thule a check and he said, oh, the rate is such and such now. And I, I couldn't believe my ears. And I, are you sure? Does that include lights? No, it doesn't include, and we never came back to the junior high field at all. So this, you know, for context, when the rates go back down and you're competitive to next-door neighbor counties, they will come. If you build a rate scale like this, they will come. I, I kind of like the competitiveness here. Okay, so if that helps. The other thing is, as a matter of fact, I'll just kick this on there. It was so expensive that we took our team and we practiced at Dory Park over by Richmond Airport because it was free. They actually chalked the lines for us and there was no fee even for lights. We just had to get off the field before the Little Leaguers showed up. It was perfect. So we were willing to drive almost an hour to do that. So I, I like that part of this plan. Also, the two-hour time limit we're talking about, a lot of times in travel ball, they have a self-imposed time limit. And generally, it's two hours. Sometimes it's two hours and ten minutes. You have to, if you start an inning, you got to complete it by such and such. Sometimes you only play six innings instead of seven because of the time limit. And I think that dovetails nicely with the light thing. I think that's workable. And then the Little League out of, out of county fee, you know, we had people from Powhatan. I'm thinking, I was friends with Coach Danny Seider that, that is now deceased, but I remember him coming in with some kids from Powhatan and playing Huguenot Little League. And I don't think they would have minded paying ten bucks to come in at all. I, I don't think that's a game changer whatsoever, so I agree with that. And then the last question I had was the one Barry just got answered for me, and that was the, hey, county taxpayers, why are we paying again for this field? Well, if you can tell Johnny he can or cannot play, you're in a different category than out here in Little League. And I would agree with that. As a coach, I would understand that. As a parent of two players that played since they were five, I, I would pay that money. So if that helps.
We do want to point out however, and we want to be very clear, that the citizens who came to you at, on March sixteenth, those were travel baseball teams who had never been charged before. So why, Mr. Nordvig has pointed out that he was a travel baseball team that was charged by previous recreation staff. There are travel baseball teams that previous recreation staff made the determination that they would not have to pay. And that's what Ms. Woodall is referring to. We don't know the logic behind what travel teams had to and which didn't. It's most like, but these teams that came and testified before you, spoke before you, if you adopt this, we will be charging them. So if you don't wish us to make these charges, we need to know that and we will revise the ordinance that's coming before you on June first.
Well, that raises another question. Did you, in this process of structuring this fee structure, I know we had comments from don't charge us anything, the taxpayer argument, all the way to, you know, reduce the fee. So I don't know if there was any input to you or to Rec, Parks, Rec Department, or maybe to the county officials office, other than our comments that came through channels saying, well, that doesn't look too bad. I think our team can probably swing that or afford that or that's within reason. Was there any, I don't know if there was any input other than the comments that were made.
Oh, yes. And I know the gentleman that actually spoke to you in the meeting very well. They use all of our fields all the time. They actually put a lot of time and effort into the fields or have over the years.
And they improve those fields.
I know them very well. And I, and I, trust me, since this time, I have heard all sides of this coin. I have also had stark representatives that said, what do you mean you're not charging them a fee? What do you, what do you mean they haven't been paying the fee all along? So I've, I've heard all sides of it and I just tried to do the best I could with what I was hearing from everyone. And then that's when I really started looking at the other localities. And I just know that I just need to be as fair and consistent as I can. And what I charge to one group, I need to charge to another group across, across the board, regardless of if I know them, I don't know them, who they are, if they have half of their team Powhatan, half of it not. That's where it becomes very tough policing, but that's where, you know, if we institute the ten dollars per non-resident, they would need to submit a roster to me so that I could see how many participants are non-residents so that I could charge accordingly. But when it, it came into the, the lighting and all of that, it, it becomes tough to police. Do they have them on thirty minutes? They have them on an hour?
I have two questions. Barry, one for you. If, if we charge comparable rates to teams that have not been playing before, because I kind of, I understand your first question, but they have nowhere to go because everybody else is charging the same? What is your opinion on that? Like.
Well, I think that's straightforward and simple. They should have been charged before when the policy was enacted. I mean, as simple as that. That's a no-brainer. I don't know what, I don't know what the discretionary arbitrary capricious issue was, but whatever that was, throw that out. Start enforcing it, you start enforcing it, then they all of a sudden realize. I mean, I don't have a problem with the comparative, comparative analysis. I mean, I think that's probably the way to go. I'm just mainly was trying to understand this structure and understand the inputs you received and what you went through the process of trying to ferret out this issue. And I think you're right, policing lights is very difficult to do. I know we have a light issue over there. I'd like to see obviously Parks and Rec create revenue, as we've discussed numerous times, on this board the last four years we've been on it. And I understand, I understand their argument with respects to the taxpayer argument, but also that is correct for the travel team. They could accept somebody who's a non-resident, it's a little bit different standard, it's a little bit of cut above. And so it's a little bit different animals, not apples, it's apples and oranges, you know, in paying those fees on that. And I know the other jurisdictions, I guess, except Henrico, it looks like everybody else does charge something. And of course, Henrico kinda has in their, Parks and Rec has the wherewithal probably to do that.
Yes.
One thing I'd like to see eventually, and this is a Parks and Rec issue, is other sources of income that we've discussed numerous times to be implemented. Because if you do that, whether it's advertisements, I know David's talked about before about the tournament issue, is that maybe over the long haul, some of these fees actually might come down and you might even be more competitive in the sense that we become cheaper and you attract even more. So I'm, I'm in favor of heading down as quickly as they can, but also at the same time, finding those other sources where Parks and Rec can actually generate the income to offset it or to increase it. So that, I mean, that's where I'm at right now. I mean, I'm.
And I know that this, this sheet's probably a little harder to read. That's why, if that second sheet was a little bit easier to read with explaining it in a little bit more detail, with a little bit of language added in regards to baseball, softball, soccer, with the hours and everything.
First of all, a couple of things. I like that it cleans it up. When I looked at their fee schedules and all the fans and butts and all that were there, it was wow. It was like, wow, who, first of all, why did we go there in the first place? The two-hour maximum, having coached and having sons that play baseball pretty high level at times, two hours is about all you're gonna keep on most kids' attention span anyway. So you're not gonna get them much past that unless they move on up in the age. I wrestled with the, the charging with a travel team that was made up of 80% or more and I had some figures in my head. But again, if I thought of it just as you have, that you have the ability to say, I'm sorry, I'm not taking every kid, so therefore I see you differently. If you're running a Little League program, you take everybody. As far as non-residents coming in, Little League will dictate. Huguenot Little League got to take Powhatan kids because there was no Little League out here. Little League will say, if you have a Little League on your county, your kids need to play there. Because then you don't have this stack of teams and they go all the way to the World Series and all those things.
But that's changed, is that true?
Well, some of the localities are Little League. Now, now that Powhatan's Little League, they're more comparable with Huguenot and Tuckahoe and those areas. However, Amelia, Goochlin, the other localities are still Dixie youth. They do not have Little League.
So they can come and play?
Yes, they can.
You can.
Yes, they can. And that's what we are actually, some of our coaches have been recruiting the players from Amelia, Goochlin, the other localities to try to build our numbers back up.
Okay. You know, the last question, so if we were to pass this on, on June 1st, would we then go back to these travel teams?
No, sir. No, sir.
So this would not start until?
Next season.
Next season, okay. I can support that. I would not want, because most of these travel teams will go out and they will budget themselves and figure, okay, we're gonna play seven tournaments and we're gonna do this, travel, and we're gonna do this. And they'll do their fundraising, or they'll tell their parents to write a check or whatever they end up doing. And then maybe, and all of a sudden you get socked with this and you're gonna say, now yeah, go back to Mr. Smith, say, we now need 40 more dollars out of you, or whatever it turns out to be. So as long as we're not.
And we have been prepping them. We've been prepping them for this, so they've all been notified that this was being looked at by the board. They're all aware of that, especially the gentleman that had come before you. They're all aware. I had actually let them know we had this meeting in case anyone did want to come.
So if we adopted it, then it wouldn't kick until next, till when?
It becomes effective July 1st. But the next season after July 1st is the fall season.
Would be fall baseball?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it would be, it would be effective in fall baseball?
Yes, sir.
We also want to point out on page 22, the very last box on page 22 has an asterisk. We need to find out if you want to, if you wish to do this as part of the ordinance or not. If the county closes the fields, make up and credits towards future rentals, we'll be encouraged. Our refund request from county cancellations may be submitted in writing to the recreation coordinator. We're gonna put in there the county administrator designee, only because it's in a county code. And will be handled on a case-by-case basis. So we need to know if you want us to even consider these refund requests or just leave this out of the code. And do you wish us to also start considering fee waivers? And if you just wish us not to do any of that, we won't put this clause into the code or seeking what you wish to do.
So I have a couple of questions.
Can I speak to that just a little bit?
You go ahead, please.
Yes, because what's happened is, especially the gentleman that came in to present to you guys before, their questions were, you know, if it's raining like cats and dogs, you know, and my practices are every Wednesday, and if it rains every Wednesday for the month of June, will I still continue to be charged? That's where with this language, I would like to encourage that they would be discounted or that would offset their July month. Or, you know, but you could have, where a team could be folding, and that would give them the option of putting that letter in writing to say, you know, we would've liked to have offered, you know, the program in July where we could've offset that cost. But if they no longer have a team, they're gonna want that money back because they're no longer together. So we had that come up as well as, in regards to some of the waivers, we have a few tournaments that are on the books that have never been charged, like the Charlie Green Memorial Tournament. That would allow, you know, if they still wanted that to be waived, they could do a letter in writing. So if we don't have that language in there, I would be charging for the Charlie Green Memorial Tournament, just so you know.
I, so I think that you should have an opportunity to, for instance, I think they had the, the home run hitting contest for a young lady who they're trying to raise money for a wheelchair for, and they were using the fields to throw softball for people to hit over the fence. Those type of events, I think you should have some type of opportunity to say, you know what, we're gonna need the field for two hours. We're using this for fundraising for a charitable organization. Thinking the Charlie Green Foundation, the money, I think if I remember correctly, and it may not be 100%, it went to the sheriff's department for some type of.
The family.
Fund they, they use. I think it needs to be there. One question, so a guy comes into town and he books a tournament. And he books the tournament and he says, I'm gonna run a tournament all day Fri- Friday night from 5 o'clock till 10 o'clock, or 11 o'clock, or whatever it turns out to be. He'll run the tournament all day Saturday and all day Sunday. And he pays his fees all up front. And then it rains all day Saturday and rains all day Sunday. If we had to put time and energy into prepping fields and doing all those things?
Right, no.
Shouldn't there be something that says, wait a minute here, we put an awful lot of time trying to get fields ready?
Right.
And we're not gonna refund, but it's, maybe it's a portion or maybe nothing at all.
Right. That's why they could do the letter in writing and we would make that determination. But we hold off as long as possible because we make those calls, you know, within, we have to notify teams. For most of the tournaments, the teams are out of town. So most of those coaches like to at least give a 24-hour notice to those teams. Now, that doesn't always pan out, but they do like to give notification. So we typically, if you have a Saturday, Sunday tournament, I typically get that check on Friday. And by that time, they've usually had a chance to take a look at that weather. That's not to say that something else doesn't come through. But if we have already prepped the field, fields and maintained them, I would recommend that we retain part of that cost. And that's why they would do the letter in writing. Or keep it all. Laura?
Soccer's different than prepping a baseball field, but go ahead.
That's exactly.
Right.
I think that perhaps has changed, Mark, just a little bit. I only, I mean, my son does play in the, in the travel tournaments. And what they do now is they, they use that money towards a future tournament. So if you have signed up for the tournament that's this weekend and it's a $400 tournament, which is a typical cost for a two-day tournament, or if it's a one-day tournament, it's a $200 to $300 cost for USSA. And if that tournament is not a go, that money then rolls on to the next tournament or you do not pay that fee. It's gotten pretty competitive because there's so many tournaments out there that if those gentlemen started to do that, they would shift away from those gentlemen and go with the other gentlemen that are in USSA. So that might've changed over time.
Last question I have. So I'm gonna run a tournament this weekend in Powhatan County.
I would love for you to.
And, and I need the fields. And I'm gonna be charged, and I've gotta write you a check for $500, okay? And I don't send it to you till Friday. But as I'm putting this tournament together, I realize that I can't get the number of teams and I can make some money. I'm gonna lose money, so I don't send you a check. I call you and tell you, you know what, I don't, I don't need the fields. I mean, do we have a contract? Or do we just let the guy say, well, you know, you weren't gonna make any money? And maybe we turn people away because?
Right.
We had already told this guy he could have the fields then. So should we, do we require a deposit, a non-refundable deposit? Or do we just say, hey, I don't trust you that you're gonna send me the money?
At this time, we do not. At this time, it's a pay before you can actually get on the fields to play. So if you don't pay any money, you're not going out on our fields. And if I don't have the check by Friday, our guys maintain those fields on Friday for that Saturday morning tournament. Our guys don't go out, if I don't have that check in hand, they're not gonna go out there and maintain those fields.
But Billy has a good point. We've reserved that for them. We could've, we could've scheduled another tournament that day. We may want to consider it.
No, absolutely.
Maybe we should see what our localities do because, you know, if I remember right from my son's travel days, and it's been a few years ago, we used to, I mean, we used to have to send the money in earlier than, than that. And, and some of it was a deposit to say, you know, because, could. He could try to say, I'm gonna have a 12-team tournament and I'm anticipating charging this much. I mean, they do this to make money.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, he decides he can't get it to four and it's not economically possible for him. So he just calls you on Friday and says, hey, couldn't get my teams to come. Have, have a great day.
So far, so far I haven't had that come up because we haven't had the interest. But that is something that I could see as that interest begins to generate, that it, that could be a problem. So I don't have a problem with if we did a deposit. Because I do work with, whatever organizers I've had so far have been working with me all through the week. They call me and they say, you know, is the weather looking good? You know, and they let me know I've got 10 teams, you know, and we've been working on that through the week, leading right up to the tournament. But I could see, like you're saying, if something happens. But usually by Wednesday, I have a judgment from the team. Most teams come Monday is when a lot of their deadlines, and then the actual schedules come out on Wednesday and then I get the check on Friday. So most of these guys know by Monday whether or not their tournament is gonna be a go. And then they get with me by Wednesday and then I receive the check by Friday. But that's not to say that as we grow and as we, you know, get more teams out here, that that couldn't change.
Well, if, you know, I guess back to you kinda making this user-friendly and.
Right.
Competitive as possible, if, you know, I'd be curious to have, if you could just make a phone call or two and find out if the localities are doing anything.
I, I haven't. I mean, I have all that information. I can just get it together for you.
And that would be something that would go into the staff internal policy and procedures manual. Board sets the fees and we would put that, whether there's a deposit required or the refundings in the staff internal policy.
I make a suggestion, I think Billy's on a good point there. What I would do with that asterisk language is think it's real simple. Just put it in a policy form. And what you do is that there's two parts really, maybe three parts now. Billy's raised the issue of reservation or deposit, but that could be one component. But just say, you know, if it's canceled or closed because the county has to do it because of weather or other conditions, just makeups and credits towards future rentals, shall be allowed. And then have a clause where you just say a refund can maybe have a request, but it's a case-by-case basis. So what you're doing is your policy is basically encouraging people not only to make a deposit to secure the fields, but your policy then is steering towards people to continue to use the fields either through makeup or credits. And you're discouraging obviously refunds. It still leaves an option or a window open on a case-by-case basis, which you probably should leave some discretion there for out of the blue or extreme situations. But you're encouraging not that issue of, I wouldn't use the word encourage, I would just say shall. You shall, you, if it's canceled due to county concerns and you had it booked, then you can do a makeup or a credit. And you may request a refund, but you're not guaranteed getting it. So what it does is it steers your office with less paperwork hopefully. And your burden goes down to you to process all this paperwork on refunds. I mean, I think that's the way you structure it, but, and then have the deposit there too, because you're right, if somebody reserved it and it's, it's like anything, it's like renting anything else, there's a deposit.
The clause that Chesterfield has, just for information, it says, when athletic facilities are closed due to inclement weather, groups may still incur costs if services have been performed prior to cancellation.
Yes.
And I can include that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams?
This will be implemented this fall, correct?
Yes, sir.
If we decide to go with the fee schedule that you're proposing, what if any impact will be on your budget?
It should start to generate some revenue just from simply those travel teams that are coming in. And if, even if it's, might be $200 to $300 a team, and if I've got, I think when I first did the study, I think it could bring in for the fall, maybe, you know, $2,000, something like that.
Currently, the county is not hosting any tournaments, correct?
Oh, no, we are. Oh, no, we are not.
No, we do not host.
We are not hosting them. We do have them that come into the county.
What is, what does somebody that actually brings a tournament here, as Bill described, you know, for a weekend, I've been told that they can make as much as $15,000 a weekend?
You've asked us to do a study on that, Mr. Williams? Yeah, but we are gonna come back at a later date. We, we focused on our fee schedule. We didn't focus on the second request that you made. So we're, we're asking that you allow us to complete our study on hosting these and bring that back to you as, at a later date, which is what we have planned to do.
That's fine. I would still like, I would still like to get that information from my own, from my own cell.
Right, and we'll get that for you.
Do you know, do you know now, Marianne, what they?
It could be as much as, as $10,000, $15,000 on, on a tournament if it's a two-day. However, a lot of those costs go into covering umpires, whether they supply balls or not. Each director has their own, does it a little bit different. For the one-day, Sunday tournaments, the teams have to supply their own balls and they pay for their own umpires. If it's a two-day tournament, a lot of times they supply the balls, they pay the umpires, they put them in hotels and motels. So it really does vary by each tournament director. So it can, it can range anywhere from making $5,000 to 10 to 15.
But is the tournament director's salary being paid and that's net of his salary? Or is that what he's making? So that's, that's what staff wanted to analyze, is that in order for us to do that, we'd have to have a person to run the tournament, where these tournament directors are doing it to make, that's their, what they're doing is making their salary. We'd end up having to pay someone to run it. So that's why we wanted to do more analysis for you, Mr. Williams, and bring you back complete costs for how to run a tournament.
Do you have a, a date in mind where that's gonna be coming forward?
That won't be coming forward to you until the fall. And the reason for that, we've already booked up all of our workshops. We already have them all covered completely through fall before we have another workshop on this issue, or any issue that's not already scheduled.
USSA as well as nation's baseball.
Marianne, one, one final question.
Yes, sir.
Just, I'm absolutely sure I understand how this fee schedule works for tournaments. It's got $75 and it says, and that's cost per day, comma, per field for three hours plus. So how does that apply to each game? Is that the deal?
No, that three-plus hours would be, if it's a tournament, it would be a $75 per field and you would be using that field for three or more hours for a tournament. So it's an all-day, you would get a field.
So if you had a three-day tournament, so would that be $75 each day?
Yes, sir. Per field, per field.
Okay, that's fine.
So if they use three fields, they're gonna pay $150.
Per day.
If you use four fields, you know. Having used, my son played a lot of travel baseball, my younger son did, and having used to run tournaments as a fundraiser for us to try to defer costs to travel, there, And having used to run tournaments as a fundraiser for us to try to defer across the travel, uh, there, you know, maybe we did a poor job, but we never seemed to clear five, five or $10,000.
In order to do that.
Lucky if we could, you know, bring home a thousand or $2,000 if everything clicked and we were doing our own concessions and, and borrowing, you know, pleading with people to give us drinks to sell for 50 cents and things like that. But, but, but I see as more people come, Henrico, and I can remember booking when my son played AAU basketball, we would work, we would book four or five hotels and, and one of the tournaments, upper lower collegiate gym. And we never had any barking and carrying on from anybody in Henrico, but filling a hotel up and spending money in it. So, you know, we need to get a hotel. We need to have places for them to eat. That's where your revenue comes from and one day we'll figure it out. But I guess let's get, get started getting the people in here and at least it'll help the Red Barn and the Shitzes and the world and whomever else at this point when people come. And the best thing on a baseball tournament is letting it rain out for a while and let them run around and spend money and then come back to the fields.
I have another question. This dead horse has been beaten pretty hard, but, um, field prep.
Yes.
What, I'll paint you a scenario. Let's say there's a travel ball team that has a game Saturday morning, so the field is prepped on Friday. They drag and chalk the fields and put the bases in. They come and play on Saturday morning. Another travel ball team is practicing on Saturday afternoon. Or they might be playing a scrimmage, you know, not an official game. And they would like a field that's chalked and been dragged. So we have somebody that comes out then Saturday noon and redoes the field or?
No, that doesn't occur because typically for the tournaments, they use that field all day long. No one else would even have an opportunity to come in at a later time.
But this isn't a tournament. This is like, the travel ball team has one game against, you know, one official game with umpires in the morning. In the afternoon, another travel ball team just wants to practice.
That's where I did leave that $40 later for tournaments and camps, that grooming per occurrence after the initial field prep of $40 where they could pay to actually have that prepped. At this time, we do not have a staff member, I do not believe, that can come out on a Saturday to prep in between.
Okay, and that's what, that's where I was going. Can we do something like, I'm speaking as a coach. I would drag and chalk a field myself and have many times. Can I get that $40 fee waived? Because we're not going to be able to do it for them anyway and they'd still be paying for the field and.
Right, I would not charge that. Now just keep in mind that, that, um, I don't know what type of equipment, if you're just talking about bringing a hand drag or what you're talking about bringing, but you would not be able to use county equipment to actually drag the field. That becomes a liability. Uh, we can't have citizens using county equipment to drag or line a field.
We actually used to have our own drag.
Okay.
And, uh, we had our own choker, so.
Okay.
Some teams would do that.
We used to make the kids do it, no, just kidding.
Anyway, okay. So they, they could do it and not have to pay a prep fee?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. And, and that's in other localities. Chesterfield, if you're using the field for the weekend, you get that one-time prep included in your cost. After that, they don't come out and drag the field for you. It's you play on the field as it is or you make whatever happen to make it look pretty and, and.
Any other questions of staff?
Okay, we have advertised this public hearing as part of the next item on your agenda, so we'll cover that on the next item.
Mary Ann, thank you for the work you've done to bring this information to us. And, uh, you know, I think it's fair to begin, at least it simplifies the process. And, and I'm comfortable that we're not going to hit people with this till fall season in baseball or, or whatever else. Thank you. We'll move on to item, uh, let's see here, six D, is that correct?
Seven D.
Seven D, I apologize. Seven D, Ordinance 2015, amending in Powhatan County Code, Ordinance Appendix Fee Schedule, which is quite lengthy.
Right, so the fee schedule is very lengthy and we have advertised a public hearing on June 1st. So tonight is just a discussion and we're asking, we would be asking you to take action after the public hearing on, on June 1st. I want to thank Charlotte, she's not here, but I want to thank Charlotte Schubert because she has gone through the fee schedule in detail and made so many needed changes and most of it is just wording. So we're not going to go through all those wording changes. I'm going to point out to you just where the dollar amounts have changed.
Yes, that's right.
Or if there's something significant. And we want you to know though, that annually you should be adopting your fee schedule. It came out of, uh, it got out of sync when, um, we had, um, change of finance directors. But Charlotte and I will bring this forward to you every budget time and you'll be reviewing the fee schedule as part of the budget process. We held it up to now waiting for recreation fees is why you didn't get it. And it's okay, we wanted to get the recreation fees on here. And you will adopt it and it becomes effective July 1st. So what you're adopting, if you do choose to adopt it on June 1st, would become effective July 1st, which is why we were telling you the recreation ball fields won't really be effective until the fall season. So it has, um, it starts on page 25. There are a lot of red lines and I'm only going to point out again, not everything. The main thing that all the red lines has to do with is in that third column, which used to say subject. We, and sometimes it had a subject matter and sometimes it had a, we just put the department that's in charge of that fee. So you'll see that. And she's also changed some descriptions and things. So the first fee that you see at the bottom of page 25, I'm not sure why the $50 was crossed out, but it always was $50. At the bottom of page 25, we're not changing anything there. So if you go to 26, so I'm looking at any red marks that are in the last column, which is the dollar fee. So animal control has been charging these fees that you see, but they've never been in your fee schedule. So they're being added to the fee schedule because we want all your fees in your fee schedule. So it's not anything new, but when you read the, um, ad, it does say that we added animal control fees. But this isn't anything that they're not already charging. On page 27, in the middle of the page, it says $28.75, the annual license fee on each motorcycle. Again, the treasurer is already charging that, it was just never in the fee schedule. And the same thing about three-fourths of the way, the electronic summons system fee of $5 is currently being charged. Was never in the fee schedule. As I said, Charlotte put in a lot of work with the departments going through the fee schedule to make sure everything was covered. So now, starting on page 29, is where we're getting rid of all that long list of recreation fees and that goes all the way over to the bottom of page 30. So starting at the bottom of page 30 are the fees which Mary Ann just described for you. Two at the bottom of page 30 and then one, two, three, four at the top of page 31. Those are new fees. Then there's no changes except for departments until you get to page 39. And it's at the three-fourths of the way down and it's building inspection fees as they relate to amusement rides. They call them amusement devices. And these are the amounts that are allowed per the state code and therefore that's why we're putting in those amounts. So midway down the page on page 39, building inspections, amusement rides.
So they're, they're consistent, that's what's allowed in state code, are they consistent with?
Correct, they're, they're per what's in the state code. There's some fees at the top of page 40 which have never been charged, so we're just removing them at the top of page 40 and building inspections. The next change is on page 44 and it's the utility fees. And it's the, um, two up from the bottom. These are the utility rate changes that we brought forward to you as part of the budget process and we have advertised this increase and that is an increase in, in rates. And that, those are the only dollar changes. Again, they've all been advertised, there's a public hearing set for June 1st and then we'd ask you to take action on the fee schedule after the public hearing. So we stand ready to answer any questions that you might have on any of the fees?
Amusement rides.
Yes.
Does that only apply to the Powhatan County Fair or what is that, I mean, do we have amusement rides elsewhere?
I'd have to ask Mr. Altman that.
I don't get that either. Is this like if you rent a bouncy castle or something?
Well, anything that, the statewide utility code partners, like the, the fair that you get an inspection done, so those fees are dictated by statewide utility codes, so that's why.
I was, I was just curious, March I.
But are they bouncy rides in people's, bouncy things that are in people's backyards at birthday parties?
If they're rentals, they may have to, because I, I, there's a line there, there's a line there depending upon how big it is, what they're for, but like we've rented some, have an inspector come out. But if you have, you know, there are some that because of the size, you know, so, and that's all driven by the state milli code.
So what?
Right. We also, you know, we don't police that, so we don't know if someone's doing it. But the big ones that we know about, we make sure we do the fairs so that they're safe.
Well, they, they have to be inspected. I mean, you know, all of them before, uh, the fair could be certified to be open. We had to send our inspector to examine and inspect, so.
If they pay a third party to go out, we have to get the inspection sticker from the D O C D.
Okay.
Go out there, they give us the verification.
Okay, so they've got a third party. So it's actually the third party person is doing the inspection, not all we're doing is saying, okay, you show me the report. Okay. Any other questions on the fees? So really there was not, the increases that in the fees were basically the water and sewer.
And amusements.
And amusements, okay.
Where can people access this, just from the public to find out what these are?
The fee schedules are currently on muni code, which there's a link from the county website that says, from the county website, you click on muni, Virgin, excuse me, Powhatan code. It will take you right out to the Powhatan code. Also, we advertise it in the newspaper and in the newspaper it says, if you want to see a full copy of this ordinance, come to the county administrator's office and we have out there for people to inspect. We do that with all the ordinance changes that we do. We can't advertise the entire ordinance change in the newspaper, but we always say, "For your inspection in the county administrator's office is a full text of this ordinance change."
Perfect, thanks.
So, so the, the animal control fees that we have, they were being collected, but we weren't, they were not communicating with people?
Correct.
Okay, I'm not going, I'm not going there. And, and I don't, who it was or maybe I imagined this, but we were not seeing to getting a, a lot of, uh, dog licenses, applications. Am I imagining that or?
We're not getting very many people coming in and asking for a dog license. Again, that is not something that I, I don't believe that, that is anything that we enforce.
No, we probably don't.
That you would come in, so.
I guess we're coming in fact if your dog got caught running around or whatever else. I'll think I'll leave that alone.
But the point is, it saves your dog's life.
It does.
Because if it's got a tag on it and it's picked up running, at least they can try to track you down and return your animal.
Absolutely. And then you have to get, when you get the license, you have to show that you have an rabies shot. So anyway, all right, I'm fine.
Yeah, but on the other hand, Carson, if he's engaging in criminal activity, you don't want to have your name on him.
That's correct. Hopefully that's not taking place. Any other questions of staff about the fees? We'll move on to item seven E, uh, adoption of FY 2016 five-year CIP program and other capital programs.
This is found on page 48 and I'm not, I'm not going to read through. You've had numerous workshops on this, so that's all I'm going to say on that. What I want to point out on page 49, the first thing I want to point out is
Excuse me.
last part of the resolution, it says, "Be it further resolved that the CIP is a plan and is such as not to be construed by the Board of Supervisors as approval of any project nor the budget and appropriation of funds for any project." That's, that's the same wording, in fact, that's the same wording that you had when you adopted the CIP for FY 15, which you adopted last October. So we were bringing forward to you three resolutions. One of them is to adopt the CIP. The next item is where you budget and appropriate the items in FY 16 in the CIP. And then the third item is where you budget and appropriate the other capital program in the CIP. So first we're going to cover the CIP and I'll do it very briefly because we've, we've done it before. It starts on page 50. It is the same CIP that was distributed on April 22nd. So I wasn't going to go through it and so I'm starting page 50, you're on 51, you're there. That's where it starts. There was a cover page on page 50. So it is on page 51 is the summary sheet for the entire CIP. The top of it is the CIP with the funding sources. And then there's the other capital program with the funding sources. And at the very bottom, we've added this for your information where it says total CIP and other capital. It's the total of the two programs. And then it has the funding sources for the, for the, for the two programs. So after that, following on page 52 is where there's one sheet for every type of project. So page 52 are the list of the projects that make up public safety projects. 53, Public Works. 54, Parks and Recreation. 55, Utilities. 56 are the school projects. The one thing that's different on the school project sheet on page 56 from the others is that on the school project, it, it looks the same as the one on the front page on page 56. It lists the school's CIP projects first with their funding sources. And then it lists the school's other capital pro, other capital program, which only has two items. That's the bus fleet and the support vehicles and now the funding sources for those. And then there's a total for the schools, total CIP and other capital and all, and then a total of the funding sources to add that, those together. And then starting on page 57 is the detail for all the county's other programs. So the fire and rescue apparatus is on page 57. And I know, Mr. Williams, you had asked about the tanker for Company Four and that is in FY 16 on this. And that's one of the reasons we want you to, the tanker at Company Four is one of the reasons we want you to adopt the CIP in June because then we can get the same price on that tanker that we got on the one that we just purchased for Company Two. So, yeah. So page 58 is a continuation of fire and rescue. Page 59 is the, are the sheriff vehicles in the other capital. Page 60 is animal control vehicles. Page 61 are admin vehicles. 62 is facilities and grounds, capital maintenance. 63 is recreation capital maintenance. This, this is the first time we've put this in. We, I asked staff and staff inventoried all of the ball fields and the, this is really capital maintenance to the ball fields to bring them in. The last one is the IT infrastructure and systems. So I can, I'm ready to answer any questions you might have on specific projects or anything related to the CIP. Or I can go into the funding, which is starting on page 65. I'll go whichever makes most sense to you. Let me know how you would like me to proceed.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Wyler, Cobbs Creek, what's our status on that?
On Cobbs Creek, I'm going to, we're still in negotiations with Henrico County. I'm going to update you at a, a closed session on June 1st. I'm going to be standing on that.
On June 1st, all right.
On June 1st, if we're okay with that. And Cobbs Creek, would, if, when those doc, not if, when the documents get signed, the payments don't start until Cobbs Creek is completed, which the estimate I've heard is, um, five years down the road. So I think we're looking at 2020, that before we start making payments, that's my understanding. So I, don't quote me exactly on, on the dates. Do you remember the exact date they were saying? I don't either, so we'll get, but they don't start for a number of years out past.
2021 with the dates.
I thought that was, yeah. I thought, I was thinking 20, but I think you're right, it's 20. So the payments on that or, you know, even the project doesn't come into play for a number of years down the road.
But no advances, deposits, trophies?
The only thing that we're required to pay is the annual operations, which right now is very small. It's about a hundred, 100,000, I, no, it's not 100,000. It's like 45 or 20, 20 to $40,000 a year. Do you remember what it is? It's okay, we don't remember. We're going to update you on June 1st.
Okay.
I have a line item question from page 62. I think it's the very top, I'm scrolling up. The Fighting Creek Park, the playground facility, $95,000, that's a lot of money. Can, can you walk me through $95,000 worth of playground stuff?
Correct, that $95,000 was the amount that was available in proffers to be used for parks. So we had the board budget and appropriate the entire amount and the board understood. And, and I know you weren't here at the time, so. At that time, we told the board, we are replacing the playground equipment that is at the park near the library. We've already done that. My understa, I believe that cost came in at about $65,000. And the board has allowed us then, as we have other needs that may come up at any parks, that we can continue to use the remaining of that $95,000 as needs come up in the parks. Because it was proffered specifically for parks, we can't take it back and use it for anything else in the general fund. We have come up with a need, um, we replaced the bleachers at one of the school fields because that school field was used for our softball and baseball. So even though it was a school field, it was used by our team. So that was another use that we had for the 95. There was, there was another use and I can't remember, but every time they want to use it, they come to me and say, can we use this? And actually now they're going to Charlotte. Public Works goes to Charlotte, Charlotte. Public Works goes to Charlotte, Charlotte determines if it's an allowed use of the proffer. So I can get your complete list, if you would like, of what we have done with the 95, and the cost of each item, if you would like that, and the balance remaining in that project to be spent on parks projects.
My only question is, let's say we have $3,000 left over, what happens to that money?
It would have to, if we don't spend it, it would have to be returned to those that proffered it.
Okay.
So it's been proffered, as part of the proffer calculation, there was a certain amount of parks that was sitting there, we used some of it to get the equipment, and some of it we addressed future needs, and to, I forget, a certain amount of years that you have to.
Okay.
You have X number of years to spend it.
Use it, and if you don't spend it, then you've got to give it back.
I just wasn't in on the formation.
No, you weren't, so, don't hesitate to ask any questions, please.
Guess what, I think when we also, too, we were like, "Holy moly."
You have to use $95,000 for the playground equipment, was a good question.
It was still a matter.
Yeah, but please do stop and see the new playground equipment at the, at Fighting Creek Park.
Yeah, I remember that.
By the library, it's, it's used by a lot of people.
I was out there right after ribbon cutting, but I, I didn't see $95,000 when I looked at it, but it's nice.
No, there's not $95,000.
Now you can go ahead, there is a portage on there.
Oh, the, the restroom.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question.
Go ahead. Davis shaking his head.
Not to jump ahead, but I know we've got the project estimates on the schools for fiscal year 2016, and the 1.1, it's a 1.1 million for A&E. And then you have also construct slash purchase, 519,000, and then I know on.
Can you tell me what page on?
I'm sorry, that's 56.
56, okay.
This is fiscal year 2016.
Okay.
It's got the 1.1, basically, for A&E, and then, of course, the constructive purchase, 519. And then, when I was, when I read through the packet this afternoon, looking at the, the next thing we're doing, the budget appropriation, I see the 1.1, but I don't see the constructive purchase, 519, just wanted to know, I thought the A&E covered all that, and construct purchase would be later in the next fiscal year if we chose to do that?
The construct purchase is not for the junior high school, that construct purchase is for the Powhatan Elementary School maintenance, and for the Powhatan High School maintenance asphalt, and the schools agreed that they would cover that out of their operating budget, so we're not budgeting and appropriating that 519.
Okay.
Okay, so.
All right.
The same holds true, if you keep looking down further on that list, you will be budgeting and appropriating the school bus fleet, part of that is for a down payment, and part of that is for the lease on the school bus fleet, but you're not budgeting and appropriating the support vehicles, the schools, so that they're covering the support vehicles out of that capital money that they have.
Right.
Now, I understand that they said they had 400, 200 in capital, and they have more than that, but that's the schools' issue to work, how they're going to find that, so. That was the agreement that I reached with Dr. Jones.
Any other questions?
So I'm going to go to funding, and funding starts on page 65, and there were many different options that were provided for you in 65, I'm not going to go through all of them, because we've been in, in detail. 65 is option D, and 65 is option DA, and the board never made a decision on funding, and the board doesn't have to make a decision on funding. That's why I started out with that clause, that it's only a plan, and we're recommending as staff that you're budgeting and appropriating the first year of the CIP, FY 16, and that's allowing us to go out and do the design on the junior high school, do the design on the Sallyport. We're already issued the RFP for the design of the radio system, and we would also ask if we can do the design on the, on the, I was going to call it bus garage, on the transportation, the joint transportation facility. We're going to bring back to you then, a year from now, earlier than a year from now, in February timeframe, February and March timeframe, bring back to you more closely accurate costs for all of these, and at that point in time, that's when the Board of Supervisors, you'll make your decision then on what now are we really going to fund, and what are we not going to fund? Are we going to, how much bonds are you going to approve, or how much bonds do you not want to approve? And in what ye, which years? In waiting that extra nine months, we also then have better data on real estate investments, we better data on costs, better on real estate assessments, because we're doing an assessment that comes in in January, we'll have better information for you, more up-to-date information, before you make any decision about if you're going to move forward on any of those projects, and in what years you want to do those projects.
So basically, you're putting money in there for FY 16 for design work on the Sallyport Junior High and Bus Garage.
Correct, yes. And the other, high priorities, the radio system. But you did that, you did that in 15, the radio system, yeah. Those were the four top projects. We did not put anything in there related to the major mechanical at the Powhatan Elementary School. That was, those were the five top projects, so.
I just have, Mr. Chairman, one question. On the Sallyport and the courthouse expansion design, I know, and I think you've been trying to coordinate with Teresa on this, I know she's, I think, submitted that study to try to capture additional state monies if there are security deficiencies, or there's some kind of deficiencies. I don't know if any of, I don't know how that's going to come together, or maybe it won't or will come together, in other words, coordinating with her on. I think she can start, I don't know if she can start charging, she doesn't have a pot of money yet, but she can get allocations for that, and how that would affect the cost, will that be available to us before we make the final trigger on that? Because I would think that we might be able to leverage that, because obviously, Sallyport issue has been put forward as a safety issue, so I would assume that would be a deficiency the state would help with. I don't know.
Well, in response to that question, first of all, the state did come out and do the assessment, and actually, just today, we received back from the state, they just sent us a letter, and they say, "We certify that there are security needs at the courthouse." So that's already been sent to Teresa Dobbins, a clerk of the court, so she now is going to be start, she said, "I'm now going to start," so I assume, I'm not sure when now is, if it's today or next week. But she's going to start charging it, as is, she's already sent that to the district court clerk, and they will start charging it. So you're right, we will have fees collected by the time you have to make a decision on the Sallyport. And we will also bring back to you, if it's allowed, at that time, if it's allowed on the Sallyport. Now, I don't want to speak for Ms. Dobbins, but I can tell you what Ms. Dobbins has told to me, she's identified many, many, many uses within the existing courthouse for that courthouse security fee.
I understand.
So that would be a discussion that the board would have to have at the time, once we find out what it is exactly that she would like done with, with the fees, or what is her recommendation to, for the use of the fees.
Any other questions?
Okay, so this is, this is, this is a discussion item only, we'll bring it back for action, and on June 1st, a public hearing is not required on the CIP.
So what will the proposed CIP look like with the money being allocated or being put in there for FY 16 for the design, and you're going to have these other projects, and then you said we were going to make some determinations at points in the future about how we were going to finance, when we were going to do it, et cetera. So beyond FY 16, what does FY 17, 18, 19, 20 look like?
It looks like exactly what it looks like on page 51. Things are in there as placeholders and placeholders only, and that's why that phrase that's in the resolution is so important, that says, "It's a plan, it's not to be construed as approval of any project, nor the budget and appropriation of any funds for a project." But it is a plan that says, right now, we have the bonds sitting, being issued in FY 17. So if you look at the very bottom of page 51, and way at the bottom under funding sources, it shows bonds for general at 9.4 million, and bonds for school at 42.5. But again, only a plan, waiting for the board a year from now, or nine months from now, when the five of you are here, having the discussion then about when are we really going to issue these, these bonds.
So that gives us some wiggle room in case the bottom falls out.
Oh, exactly.
We have made a commitment.
Yeah, good, very good point, Mr. Tucker, yes.
And in the scenario that we last saw on the 22nd, was.
That was D and DA?
Yeah, DA, and there was DA.
And DA is on page?
65.
Thank you. Specific, yeah, 68 is, 67 is DA, which shows you issuing the bonds, 34 million in 17, 7 million in 18, and 10 million in 20. That's what DA shows.
We're not making any commitments.
You are not, no, that's what I'm trying to say, you're not making any commitments, but that's, and then D, option D, showed you issuing the total 51 million, 52 million in 17. But again, you're not making any commitments to any of that, you're waiting to get the information.
That was the option that gave me the heart attack.
No, both of these, well, no, I'm not going to say when you had a heart attack, but in both of these options, it was at 90 cents.
No, that was my point.
Oh, okay.
It was about, remember I said, if you put it all there in FY 17, take it to the bank, the bottom comes out of the tub, and FY 17, the day after, we do the financing.
Oh, right, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. But you've got to, you've got to, yeah.
And the other thing that came out in those two options was, I believe, interest only for.
Correct, so.
For some of the bonds in the option, and if I remember correctly, we were looking at putting aside a potential 1% gain from the real estate.
Right, that's for option D.
Yeah, and then we also said, you know, it was like going to be a projected, what was it, 3% in personal propting each year going forward, and it was a projected 8% in the sales tax each year.
Oh, you're talking about the increases to create.
Yeah, the increases to funding.
Right, yeah, 3%, you said it exactly right, yes, that's on page 69.
Right.
Yes.
And I, I don't want to get over my skis, but I'll just repeat what I said before, it's baked for perfection, so I would urge caution. If you, we've got these assumptions, you know, in the spreadsheet that you carry, follow your formulas across your rows and your columns, and it all works, but it's, it's just like, you know, the football game you play for, but after the kickoff, Bill will tell you, the plan might change, and always does.
Might have a deflated football.
So, well, that's good, I like it. One of the things I, in addition, Pat, I would like to see, if you could share with us any projections, we know we've got a couple of, well, I know one in particular, Mr. Sowers is coming forward with a proposal for us at Falmouth Bridge, and I've asked him for projections on revenue from that rezoning, what he anticipates, and he's, he's doing that for us. If we could get that information, you could share that with us, that's another piece, I think it might be helpful.
It'd be interesting to compare Mr. Sowers's work to staff's work, and see how much congruence there is between the two estimates.
Well, we, in our estimates for revenues, we have assumed no additional.
Remember.
New construction, so we've assumed there will not be a development at Mr. Sowers' so.
But David is, but David is asking to assume.
But he wants to assume it, and we will do that.
This is coming, I mean, we know it's coming, it's right here at a doorstep, so I mean, this is not anticipating something that may happen, may not, it's coming, you know.
Well, we have a rezoning before the planning commission right now for 40 units, correct?
Right.
Correct.
And we, we'll also try and get for you, we've included in our estimates, no revenue from Bojangles, Murphy's, Auto Zone, and the Goodwill, and so we'll try and get you some numbers on those, too.
Please ask.
Yeah, we'll get you some. Are you asking for this for the first, or for next year when we?
I want it before the first, so I can have that information available. I think it's a helpful piece of information for, for all the board members.
Yeah, you have a known, exactly, it's more of a known.
More of a known.
Yeah, it's more of a known.
I've got more certainty when I know something is actually coming up out of the ground, and something's coming before us in weeks.
Okay, understood. Again, rough, these will be very rough estimates, because they're not yet built yet, and we would be making some big assumptions, so, okay, yes.
Well, what comes with just not the housing on, on the ground, so to speak, is the spending and all those things, and I agree, Ms. Williams, if you would, you would like to capture that. Mr. Sowers, I know you've seen more of the plan than, than some of us, and what I've heard is pretty exciting, and we just have to, it'd be nice to see what he kind of puts on paper.
Well, when you have somebody that's already done something in accounting, and it's quality work, you know, you have more confidence that what's going to come is going to be of the same standard. People ask me all the time, they say, "Well, what are you looking for down there?" I say, "I can tell you very easily, I mean, very quickly." I said, "Mr. Sowers has already set the bar, as far as I'm concerned." It's very, very, very nice. The only other comment I want to make is, I'm still concerned about the projected savings from the closing of the middle school. I wish I knew what was going to happen to that building, and I'm not going to go back and revisit, you know, what we talked about last meeting with the school board, but I do think it is important, because if we're saying that $650,000 is going to be out there that can be used, I would like some comfort level that's real, because if we have an adaptive reuse of that building, that cost of the adaptive reuse, build out of that building, would easily elipse the $650,000 we're saying, you know, is going to be realized through savings. We know from, you know, the meetings, that the heating and cooling systems are oversized, so if you just wanted to use the, you know, the gymnasium and the core building, you're going to have to change the heating and cooling systems. That's just a start, you know, the kind of things that you're going to have to do with that building. So Larry, if you come, come to any more conclusions about that, you know, savings, or any additional information you'd like to share with us, please do so. And, you know, you don't have to do it tonight, I mean, you know, if you want to send us something, you know, that gives us, you know, more certitude, that that $650,000 is really going to be there when we need it, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see.
7F?
7F. Can we go on to that?
Okay, so 7F is, is a resolution that would budget and appropriate the FY 16 amounts for the capital improvement program, and I have each one of them yellow-tagged, if you want me to go through the, and I can go through each one of those, starting on the page that you find them on. So I'll just do one as an example. For example, on page 52, you would be budgeting appropriating $300,000 from the general fund, which means from the capital maintenance reserve, to, for the design of the Sallyport and the emergency communication center above it. That's, that's how it works. So if you're going to go through the CIP and look at the FY 16 columns in all of these pages that I went through, that's what we're budgeting appropriating, and so I'm just going to tell you what we're not budgeting appropriating in the FY 16 column. On page 56, as already pointed out by Mr. Williams, we're not budgeting appropriating the 491 for Powhatan Elementary School maintenance, we're not budgeting appropriating 28,000 for Powhatan High School asphalt maintenance, and we're not budgeting and appropriating 152,000 for the school division support vehicles, because that's in the school's budget. So the next ones that we're not budgeting and appropriating, the next ones that we're not budgeting appropriating, I found on page 64, under the IT system structure, and it's the computer-aided dispatch CAD for $210,000, because 150,000 of that 210 is coming from a state grant. So once we receive that grant, we would come forward and budget and appropriate the total 210, which is the state grant and our local share, and so that's why we're not doing that one. And we're also not doing, on that same page, the mobile data computers for the fire engines for 56,000, because 50,000 of that is to come from grant money and 6,000 from local funds, and we'll do that when we have the grant money. So those are the only things in FY 16 that you don't see in the two resolutions, one for the CIP and one for the other capitals.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
So, Ms. Wyler, I think, once upon a time, maybe we said, "For next year, for the computer-aided dispatch, as an example, 210," to asterisk that at the bottom of the page to show that it's not truly 210 of taxpayers' money, it's 150, well, whatever the difference is, so that we, so that we know.
Right, you'd, you'd ask me to do that in the operating budget, and I'll do that in the CIP also, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, that's very helpful. But there's only a handful of those, right, in this, in this capital budget that are that way.
Correct. Correct, I pointed out, I pointed out the only two that are in there that are funded with some state fund, funding.
But I think, my only point is, it helps, I think, the taxpayer understand that we're doing due diligence, finding money wherever we can, other than their wallets.
Okay.
That's all I'm after.
And so, I've, I've gone through both resolutions and pointed out to you, comparing them to the CIP, what we're not budgeting appropriate. So, everything else in FY16 is being budgeted and appropriated. I do wanna point out that not all of it's coming from the general fund. On page ninety-seven, six hundred and thirty-one thousand is coming from school proffers. We're using school proffers to fund partially the design of the junior high school.
Perfect.
There's, there's more. On page, on page one hundred, this is for the other capital program. On the other capital program, we are using for the ambulance, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of EMS fees. And then, we're also doing bus leases, and we're also doing a tanker lease. So, not for the total amount of those purchases, we're making down payments on the buses, and we're making down payment on the tanker. So, you see just the lease amount up above. The total of the buses is nine twenty-six, we're leasing seven forty-two. The total of the tanker is five hundred, and we're leasing three fifty-one, the same as the last tanker.
I don't have my book with me, but what was the balance in the fine rescue fund at this time?
I'm sorry, I don't have that balance, but I will get it for you, and I, I don't even have a guess. I mean, I know that it's somewhere around two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, something like that. But I'll get you that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanna remark upon, this is one of the first times that we've ever really seen crystal clear how the proffers are being used and split up and why. Not that they haven't been being done in the past, but this is, this is more transparent and really, I think, is helpful to show that the line of sight between that pot of money sitting there in the proffer fund and our utilization of it. Thank you very much for doing that.
And the whole, the whole list of proffers is found on page seventy-eight. So, this was, this is the balance, we show the balance at June thirtieth. No, we show the balance at, yeah, the balance for two thousand and fourteen, which is July one. There's the balance. And we show then how much we've collected and how much you've already authorized to, to spend. So, the balance that we're starting working with right now is a nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
This is exactly what I'm talking about.
Right, that's, that's all the information.
Any questions? So, you took both resolutions, pretty much?
I went through both resolutions, yes.
Any questions? Perfect. Good. I might not be here till eleven o'clock. At this time, we'll hold our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. Can administrator comments?
Yes, I just have a, one comment, but it's, it's pretty lengthy. I just wanted to point out that you have four meetings in June. Your next meeting is June first at seven P.M. It's a regular meeting. You have a workshop on June third, Wednesday, at six P.M. here in the auditorium. You have another workshop on June eighth. That is a joint school board, Board of Supervisors workshop on June eighth at seven P.M. Here in this building. And then, you have a June fifteenth meeting at seven P.M. here in this building. And in addition to that, this hasn't been publicized yet, but we're getting ready to publicize it, there will be a town hall meeting here in this building on June eighth from five P.M. to six thirty P.M. For the fire programs department staff that are coming in and doing our fire program study. They hold a town hall meeting to get comments back from any citizens that would like to come in and make comments about the fire and rescue system. So, again, that's.
Does it exist today?
Or what they would like to see in the future, either one. So, the town hall meeting, June eighth, five to six thirty P.M. here in this room. And then, if you'll note, it's followed at seven P.M. by your workshop with the school board. So, they didn't leave us, that was the only option that we had for dates. They will be here in town, they come in the night of June seventh, and they leave the morning of June ninth. And they basically told us, we're having our town hall meeting on June eighth. And so, we worked it around your calendar, not to have it at the same time you were meeting, so.
We don't have to be here.
And you do not have to be here for it, but we wanted to make it available if you did wanna be here. So, it'll be in, in this room, and we are gonna publicize it. Callie's getting ready to get that, that out there.
Callie, you're gonna send us an email so I won't forget.
She will, she'll do it. And then, I wanted to point out, once we make it through June, on June fifteenth, your next meeting is July thirteenth. There's only one meeting in July, and there's one meeting in August, which is August third. Technically, there's two meetings in August, August third and August thirty-first. But that August thirty-first meeting is like your first September meeting. We didn't try and put it on, the first Monday in September is a holiday, September seventh. So, it was easier just to do August thirty-first, so.
Do you have an agenda for the school board meeting?
No, Mr. Mountain.
Jim is supposed to be getting that to me. He and I emailed back and forth about what we would like on it. Anything that you would like to talk about, please, if you wanna email me, I'll make sure it gets added to the agenda.
Just, just hit me what you got, and I'll think about it.
Okay, all right. Perfect.
And that's.
We talked about maybe with this fire thing moving it, but I felt it was important that we continue. We've set those meetings, I'll set three more meetings with them, one account we've got. So, let's make sure we keep going and move on.
Right, those other meetings are September fourteenth and December fourteenth, the joint meetings with the school board, so. Then it concludes my comments.
Any board comments? I have one quick comment. After talking with Tom and Pat and doing a little reading myself, as I continue to learn about responsibilities of a chairman, going forward, if you read a Robert's rules, we call for a roll call vote. So, going forward, we're gonna do roll call votes on all matters, and it's actually required, is it not, Tom?
No, where by law says roll calls on ordinances and resolutions. Routine matters, you can, you still do all in favor, aye, opposed, nay. But on role, on resolutions and ordinances, technically, our bylaws call for roll calls.
I'll share that with you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, moves we adjourn?
Second.
All in, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Nays, anybody wanna stay, speak up.